Appreciate you all coming tonight. It's nice to have you all. And we'll begin with our pledge of allegiance and Vic Reesner, a pastor from south of Danville at the Remethus Church, a resident of Willmore. We'll give our application. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our heads in prayer. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we have moved into a new month, and this is the month of Thanksgiving. And of all the things we have to be thankful for, Christmas is coming. And we celebrate you coming into the world through your son. We thank you for all the blessings, both temporal and spiritual, that we enjoy as citizens of the city of Willmore. Now, we pray for our councilmen and our councilwomen. We pray for our mayor. And we pray that he'll guide them in all their deliberations. We pray for peace in the world and every effort made towards that end. We also pray for our federal government and those who are struggling because of the shutdown. Bring that to a just resolution, we pray. But we thank you for all that we have to rejoice in as citizens of this city. Continue to give us peace and security and watch over all the deliberations that are done tonight. This we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Vic. Going to move out of the order on there and Lucas and reports and presentations first. And first one I'd like to do is Randy and Sarah Lynn. Over the last twenty years, we had a blessing we didn't even know we had. This couple has, on their own time, their own efforts, and many times with their own expense, have maintained the island as you go in on Kenla Drive. That became evident that the load got greater and greater. And it became even more necessary in the summer with no water and the drought, how difficult that was to carry buckets from their house. Well, I made it sound good. The bucket per gate, but they were literally taking care of the town for us and for the community at their own initiative. Now, in all fairness, David Ryle many times called Moltz here. But this is not David night, this is Chris night. And they agreed to let the city take that on as a responsibility. And the community, I think, is okay with that. And Randy still has a lot to do as coach and coach. And we just want to thank you for twenty years of service to Willmore. We have instituted a little program, the council and I, called Hometown Proud. And so far, we've been able to honor a Teacher of the Year and an Employee of the Year for the whole League of Cities that were Willmore people. They're Willmore people. In fact, you worked in Parks and Rec. Tell us about that.
In seventy-nine through eighty-one, for three summers, we were the directors of the Parks and Rec program, the summer Parks and Rec program in Willmore.
And had no facilities, basically.
The college.
The college campus.
Yeah.
Graciously, they let us do that.
I know.
I was in there.
I was.
I think Sharon is trying to say she was very young.
Very young.
But anyway, thank you for your families coming tonight and the support you have. But Randy and Sarah Lynn, we recognize you and offer our sincere appreciation for your twenty years of dedication and community pride. Since two thousand and five, we have beautifully maintained our landscaped area, island on Kenla Drive, welcoming residents and visitors alike as they enter from Highway twelve sixty-eight. Your commitment to keeping Willmore attractive and inviting reflects the very best of hometown spirit. You represent what it means to be hometown proud. And even more, this echoes, that is, I guess, the second entrance to Willmore, twelve sixty-eight. The city has been maintaining for years the other entrance to Willmore. So it seemed only fair that we didn't ask the citizens to have to take that on. And so the city, Jeff and his team are taking that on and will be maintaining that. And we hope as well as you did.
Twenty years better.
Twenty years from now, we'll bring Jeff up and thank him. A small, little token to you all, a key to our city. But even more important, a nice little gift card to enjoy your place. Thank you, God bless you, and thank you so much. Okay. Sharon, I think you're next.
So right along on the same lines, we are going to introduce a business of the month in David Ryle's newsletter. So the first one is Cakes by BB. So if y'all could come up and join me. As a former business owner, many years ago when my kids were tiny, before I started working for the city, I owned a business downtown. And so it's my heart. Are we going to have everyone? Come on, everybody. For local businesses, it's important to shop local and have community support. So I am going to read what I wrote in the newsletter. Pam White and her son Andrew Paddle opened Cakes by BB in February of twenty twenty-three. They are located at three thirty-four East Main Street, which is the beautiful yellow building at the very end. Since two thousand and five, they have been dedicated to crafting small batch desserts with passion, quality, and a personal touch to delight and design to reflect every client's unique taste. They are family-owned, labor-focused, and always personal. They are proud supporters of the Down Center Association of Central Kentucky, Asbury University, and Asbury Theological Seminary. All Asbury students receive a fifteen percent discount. God called Pam to start a business in Willmore as a service ministry. This store is her happy place. If you walk into their beautiful store, you will see delicious cupcakes, brownies, eight pops, and more goodies. They also gave, I did not know this, I found this out, the gluten-free muffins for drinkings. So I think Andrew does that every week and takes a third muffin. Next year, they are going to shift their focus by offering more of the live gift cards and they open on New Days. Right now, they're open on Saturdays and Fridays. If you want to know what they're going to be doing next year, you can follow them on Instagram. And if you want to place a special order, also call or follow them on Instagram. So as a special gift, we would like to offer you all a feed to the city as well. Okay, so you can put that in your store or whatever. And a gift card as well. So would you all like to tell us a little bit about your store?
Sure. First, thank you, Mayor and City Council members for asking us to just speak a little bit about our business. We are small batch, family. This is, be glad I didn't bring all my family. Only, only two of my six children and their families are here. But my son-in-law Kyle, my daughter Laura, who does my PR, social media. I don't touch a computer ever. My daughter-in-law Jessie, Andrew's wife. And their three boys, Case, Beckett, and Luca. And they are reason for involvement with Down Center Room. And the two years that we've been here, once a year in the spring, we do a fundraiser from the shop and donate all the money to Down Center Room. And it's, we've been able to really give a good sizable amount. And then, of course, Andrew. And Andrew does all, everything you see on the front. Everything in the case, the brownies, the stuff, everything Andrew does. I do the weddings and the special orders. And my husband Todd, who took my vision for what that ugly space was and helped me transform it, even though many times he's like, no, I'm not doing that. And I would come in and do everything. But thank you all so much. We, at this point, we're trying to just kind of walk our way through transitioning so we can be more involved in the growth of Willmore and give up some of the other things we're doing. We have big dessert catering, and we've done things for the seminary. And so any suggestions that anybody has for our, you know, ways we can help grow Willmore, we're just interested and grateful to be here.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I have something for you boys.
This is our first. Actually, the second, we recognized the Sterling Twilling Die as a new business. But what we want to do, as David is highlighting in the newsletter, that business is have one of you council recognize the business. So that each month, we are highlighting a business and getting to meet the people behind the business and have the community meet the people behind the business. So this was our first initiative with that. Thank you, Sharon, for that. Thank you all very much. Thank you. And I have one more presentation. Last month was Government Month with Kentucky League of Cities, and they visited Willmore. And City Clerk and Teresa and a couple of others met with them. And they asked me to make a presentation to one of our councilmembers. Tonight, I'm pleased to take a moment to recognize one of our very own, David Ryle, for achieving his Level One certification with the Kentucky League of Cities. Now, as most of you know, David doesn't exactly have a lot of free time. In addition to serving on multiple city committees, he finds time to work full-time at Asbury University as Associate Professor and Director of Political Experience, helping prepare the next generation of teachers. And as if that's not enough, he also writes the city monthly newsletter, which keeps our residents informed. Kentucky League of Cities Level One Achievement, recognizing a commitment to training, leadership, and service. This certification reflects thirty hours of Kentucky League of City-approved education to enhance Dave's service to our city. Now, in honor of his accomplishment, we have a small token of appreciation, a pair of Kentucky League of City socks, as well as this nice black, David. The socks are to keep your feet warm during all those long hours this winter as they're propped up on your desk. David, we congratulate you on this well-deserved recognition, your hard work, professionalism, and sense of humor given tonight to make a real difference in our cities. City, thank you for all you do for Willmore. And we have three other council, I believe, that are close to that. Now we get to the serious stuff. Back to the minutes we had on October twenty, two meetings on that same night. One started at four-thirty, and that was called a special call meeting. It was to have input from Kentucky League of Cities about our employee manual and handbook to update that. And that was open to the council, the public, and employees. And that adjourned at five-fifty. And so that's our special meeting. And then we'd have a regular meeting of the city council that same night that started at six o'clock and adjourned at seven-twenty-six. And those are before you for your approval, if there's no changes or corrections. Discussion. All in favor, please indicate by aye. The item under Mayor's report, the fourth one, is an ethics board needs to be appointed for the city. I last appointed a board in nineteen ninety-four. I don't know if it's ever met. But that was part of the employee manual and the recommendation from the League of Cities is that needs to be an active, or at least a put-together, more current board that would look at things from nepotism to any inconsistencies in any way that might happen. It's nothing that would be legal that would go past that, but it's just governance within ourselves. It's not any of you or me. It's not any employees. It would be outside people. It's open to, the mayor makes that appointment. There's three members of that board. And I put that before my council tonight. And you don't have to give me the name tonight. But I would like for you to give me names of people that you would like to see on that board. It's recommended an attorney be one of them, if that can be gotten. But he can't be this attorney, if he works for the city. And then two other names, but it could be three at-large people. Doesn't have to be from Willmore, just has to represent Willmore. So I put that before you. And perhaps in the meeting, we can start again to gather names. Because this employee handbook has to be passed by ordinance, the update by the end of the year. And I'd like to have that in place as part of that for the end of the year also. So that comes before you.
Who was on the committee in the past, do you know?
Former mayors and former councilmembers, usually people that had some experience.
Is it in existence and we're just replacing those folks?
Or it hasn't met for thirteen years.
And we're required to have that?
Perhaps we have no inconsistencies still.
And in many ways, just oversees HR principles as well as other governmental management.
If there was any inconsistencies in our management of our city employees, et cetera, it doesn't, I mean, Lori is the manager of the HR department. They would make recommendations. They have no authority except for recommendation to this body.
I think he said, I think he said if there were, I guess, if there, if anyone from the public had brought up anything that could be questionable, then this ethics committee would meet. But at a minimum, you might, you would probably just want the committee to meet annually. Just, and he said it could be a five-minute meeting where he said there's no, there are no issues to discuss, but just so that there's something showing that there's a committee and it is meeting.
It's probably one of those committees that doesn't matter much until there's a big problem.
Right.
And then who's on that committee would matter a lot.
Yes.
Yes. So that's just a committee that needs to be put back together. So I put that before you, and I will draw those names from your recommendations. Under new business, old business, but it's new tonight. We had one bid for sidewalk improvement projects because we were going to hit our bid limit. We had to put that out, the bid, so we did, starting with Main Street. So we're in the process of doing Main Street now. We had one bid, Shield Construction. And we unofficially accepted their one bid and put them to work today, hoping that the council would ratify that and agree to that. As you saw, they were taking out sidewalks on East Main today, going up to get those all done before Christmas. And then we'll move back to South Lexington Avenue to finish those. And then we had two bids for the Dan Glass Pavilion Solar Project and one bid of eighty-five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars Southern Solar Electrical Contract Day. And what I assume is the winning bid was Commonwealth Solar for a bid of sixty-four thousand. And those bids were opened by a quarter of last week.
Commonwealth Solar and those Dan Wiers. On the sidewalk bids, is it the same company that has been doing Lexington?
Do you need action from us?
Yes, because we had to accept a low bid. Or we have some, a bid.
I'm moved we approved, accepted two low bids for these projects.
Discussion. Question, all in favor, please indicate by aye.
Aye.
I don't have anything on the employee handbook, except it's awaiting any. Except it's waiting any input from the council. And if the council has any, you'll get those to the board.
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
One suggestion that he seemed to have, that more cities are doing, is a parental leave allowance for paternity, paternity. And I think it would be great for the city of Willmore to adopt something like that. I also really like the idea of offering Volunteer Day to our employees once a year. As many of them would probably volunteer at non-profits in our community, and it would just be great. I do understand it's a day that they're not working with us, but oftentimes that helps their own production commitment and belief in our town. So those are my two suggestions. I don't know what that looks like. It's not necessarily an additional cost. Either of those things.
Depends on maternity or parental.
You're giving them time and paying for days that they're not employed. I, I think it's worth doing in our city.
I'm going to turn that to Lori and let her see what impacts that has on budget. And then we'll find that back and take the council action.
We currently do have, I think we have eight hours in the year now for paid leave for volunteer activity. And it's, it's pretty specific as to what that covers. It says examples that do not meet the purpose would be attendance out of professional, religious, or personal interest, co-prints. I think things like sports-type gangs or whatever may be included. But it says food banks, kitchens, homeless shelters, community cleanup initiatives, and involvement in non-profits would be included. The only thing with the paternal, maternal leave, is I think if it's extended, if it's like two weeks or something, which is, I think, maybe what he suggested, two weeks up to like six weeks. I think if someone's gone that long, you could potentially need to hire a part-time temporary person to come in. Because I don't know if Jeff could go without an employee for that long without having to, you know, get someone else in there. So that's the only expense type thing I can think of is depending on how long you're for different, or you could potentially need to hire some temporary help. But we do have the volunteer in there right now, which is not something that we've had in the past.
Oh, so we just added?
We currently have that.
The eight-hour volunteer, you just added?
Yeah, it's added for the new.
For twenty twenty-six. So it's not something that's been in the past and it just? Is there a way that we can research a couple other cities on how they've done the parental leave? And, and kind of protect themselves or like manage the part-time?
Anyone else that can put on that? Again, just to mention that before the end of the year, we need to have a reading on the update. So as we're deciphering how we do and how much that costs and the impact of that, we need to have that out sometime in November because they will be printing these for us. And all employees will get one, and the city council will get one. Are there any other reports from the council?
I've got one. So give an update on the beautification committee that was. I'll tell you who's on it first. David Ryle, Wes Metcalf, Jeff Moberly, Pam White, Tammy Goble, Kimberly Renard, Rachel Weinberg, and myself. So we took the extra money that was left over from the downtown sidewalk that we needed to spend. And so last Monday, in the rain, Nicole, Jeff Moberly and his guys went down. So I don't know if y'all noticed, but we have sixteen big black pots down there, and they have junipers in them. So we took the pots that were down there, moved them down in front of the subway and Solomon's porch, decorated those with harvest stuff. That, those will, that will be coming out, and we'll be doing Christmas things. And then we also are getting more pots. They're not ready, but they're going to go in between Farmer's Bank and Solomon's porch. So we'll have the whole street full of plants and pots. Then we have three, a cluster, two clusters of threes with the tree in them and other things. We're going to decorate them for Christmas, it'll be beautiful. Then we've got a couple other things, which I'm not going to tell. It's going to be a secret. And hopefully, it will all be done by November fifteenth, for sure, by the first of Christmas. So anyways, all of this is the leftover money from the downtown sidewalk project. So pretty excited about it. We've worked really, really hard getting it all done. So thank you, Jeff and your team, for getting that done.
In the rain.
In the rain. I got a picture, I was on vacation, sorry. David sent me a picture.
Hey, you sent me down there and said, get a picture.
And they were all in their raincoats. I felt a little bad, sorry. I did, a lot.
One of the recommendations of the nursery person was that those have about a three to four-year life in the pots. And at that point, they would be taken out and planted. And then we would do this process again. So that you're always going to have greenery there. And then you have flowers that surround seasonally what you have there. So you always have some green, not a stark dead tree. And you also have seasonal plants to go through the season. So I really appreciate the initiative and the bringing in the people to help us and guide us, and I think it was. and, uh, think of it as King Nursery, whatever, uh, just lined that up. So we're depending on those to add to our tree population. Uh, those are beautiful trees, gorgeous little trees. Um, also, just in the back of your mind about trees, we have a tree aging out because of location at the corner of the old city hall. It's the largest Christmas tree in town, but it's right up against the building, and sooner a layer's gonna have to be moved. And I don't know if you're able to move a tree that big and plant it, or you just have a giant one-year Christmas tree, and you have to cut it. So we're not cutting it right now, but it's just something to put in there as far as, where does a Christmas tree go if you have a live Christmas tree that's 30 feet tall to start with? But notice that downtown, when you see, I talked to Tammy Kelsey about that. And they're excited to keep the tree as long as they can, but know that it's growing into the building. Sorry, Chris. Thank you for that. Anything else on the trees in downtown? We've already mentioned, we're trying to get sidewalks from downtown to Solomon's Forge and to Subway done, uh, before Christmas, uh, activities. Today, we had the pre-construction meeting with GRW engineers and with Allen Company. And, um, they're gonna delay construction start till the first of the year. Such a large company and so good at what they do, they can make up for a later start. It'll take them about 30 days to stockpile the supplies and pipes, et cetera, that they need. And they'll launch the first of the year. You can't put the pavement back because it's a state highway till the state highway says you can put it back. So that has to be, even though the plants might open March, it has to meet state regulations. So about 270 degrees is what that hot tar has to be that goes in. So you can't have really cold days and be putting that asphalt in. So we're patching a lot of Lexington Avenue around the corner and up on Main Street. So when that goes through there. But we're excited to be working with Allen Company. Uh, two of their representatives are here today, and we signed the contracts with them and we're underway. And working on Lori and, um, Donna will be handling the payroll of that or repayment of that and moving that project through. We hope to complete that in early April, so we're way on schedule. Be on schedule to complete that timeline we do and put that project behind the city, thankfully, at that point. Any reports from the staff? Any requests on the floor? Yes, ma'am.
It's not a request, a thank you, the water is good again.
Excellent.
Or does anybody disagree?
No one.
The water is?
It's excellent, that's it, okay, next. Today, we did, um, talk about that, and, uh, James confirmed that it had excellence, zero call. Uh, we are pulling from the river, and I'll just tell you this candidly, um, as long as the pump holds out, we're good. Uh, because we're down one pump, there's one pump being completely reworked at about a $200,000 cost. Um, and we're pulling from the river. We will be dumping the reservoir, so don't be alarmed when you see the reservoir go dry. Takes about four days to dump, and about four days to refill with clean, dirty water. Um, but that's better than plugging into the reservoir and maybe going back to what we had. In the meanwhile, we have worked with City of Nicklestown, and if we had to, we will connect to Nicklestown, and they will supply us our water till we get back in operation, if a pump went out or we had a major catastrophic problem. But the water is excellent on all the tests. And I wrote the checks for all the tests, I can assure you that it's not cheap to do that kind of testing on that kind of service. But it, it's good, and we're thankful, and God bless us with rain and cooler weathers and water got better. James, through all that, he's not here tonight, I don't think he, call me in, I'm sorry, James. Through, I'm, I didn't mean to be speaking for you, I didn't say that. You're doing great. I know you love that mic, James. Through all that, he had a family tragedy, he lost his father-in-law. And, uh, his son had a heart attack, and, uh, he still kept us, uh, running and doing well. And so we. He wants to speak at every other council. James, for this case, man.
Thank you.
You did so well. Uh, any other requests or comments?